I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Garza, would you please call the role?
Yes.
Chair Seberg.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Paul.
Here.
Mr. Igba.
Here.
Ms. Hanawi.
Here.
Ms. Wabibi.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Garza. First up on our agenda tonight is superintendent's announcements and spotlights. Mrs. Radford.
Thank you, Chair Seberg. Good evening, other members of the board, and to all who have joined us tonight and to our viewing audience. I am very pleased to stand before you with a single spotlight for this evening. I would like to begin with our National School Social Worker Week. So, the School Social Worker, Social Work Association of America, the only national organization exclusively dedicated to the profession of school social work, has deemed March 6th through the 12th as National School Social Worker Week. This year's theme is "Time to Shine." Rebecca Oliver, who serves as the SSWAA Executive Director, said that school social workers are humble professionals who often are the voice for students and families but do not always voice the value they add to the school community. School social workers shine a light on the need for mental health services, offering hope for students and families who face various challenges and lighting the way for marginalized youth. At this time, I'm going to ask you all to come join us down front. MCPS is proud to have two social workers, and they are here tonight. So, as I call their names, I'm going to ask for them to come join us down front. Joanne Gainard, who serves grades nine through 12. And Danielle Nalik, grades pre-K through eight. So, you may be wondering what our MCPS school social workers do. I'm glad you asked. They complete sociological components of evaluations. They do home visits to assess student and family needs for referrals. They coordinate appropriate health, welfare, and other services. They develop and implement interventions in the home and/or school. Develop and implement screening, identification, and referral processes, and assist schools in investigation of student absenteeism and consult as needed, among many other things. And so, we are so happy to say that we have a proclamation that I'd like to share tonight, and it is signed by our superintendent and our chair of school board. Whereas, school social workers serve as vital members of the education team, playing a central role in creating a positive environment at schools. And whereas, school social workers are especially skilled in identifying and providing services to students who face serious challenges to school success, including poverty, disability, discrimination, abuse, addiction, bullying, loss of a loved one, and other barriers to learning. And whereas, school districts and local educational agencies should continue to work with school social workers to address students' social, emotional, physical, mental health, and environmental needs so that students may achieve academic success. Now, therefore, we, Dr. Kevin Newman, Superintendent of Manassas City Public Schools, and Suzanne W. Seberg, Manassas City Public Schools School Board Chair, do hereby proclaim Sunday, March 6th through March 12th, 2022, as School Social Work Week, and commend its observance to all Manassas City Public Schools. So, thank you both so much for what you do on behalf of our students. We appreciate you more than you could ever know. Thank you. Oh, you have some, you want to give them? Oh, okay. All right, you all ready? Everybody look this way. One, two, three. Let's get over this way just a little bit. Okay, here we go. One, two, three. Okay, good. All right, thank you so much. This concludes our spotlights for tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Giffeller, thank you for joining us up here this afternoon. Are there any additions and corrections to the agenda tonight?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh, let's see. Next up is board committee reports. We do not have any school board committee reports. And I did want to say for clarification, our standing board committees do not meet often. There are no specific issues to be addressed in committees at this time. When our standing board committees meet, the meeting agendas are publicly posted, and a report from the committee chair will follow at the next business meeting. Next up, we have citizens' comments. There's no one to sign up to speak tonight, but we welcome any citizens or learning citizens of which to speak tonight. We also have comments available to, for our public hearing for the school board proposed budget. Is there anybody that'd like to speak on the fiscal year 2223 school board proposed budget? Okay, moving right along. May I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Ms. Chair, I motion that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Williams, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Tonight on the discussion agenda, we will be discussing proposed compensation for school year 2223, health insurance, and a classification compensation study. Ms. Billy K. Wingfield is presenting.
For school year 2223, we are proposing a 5% increase. Whoopsie. What am I doing wrong, Alba? For school year 2223, we are proposing a 5% step increase for the support and license salary schedules. The administrative salary schedule does not have steps, therefore, we are proposing a 5% increase of the administrative salary for school year 2122. And with that being said, we will move on to review the salary schedules. And we will start, wherever you would like to start. This is the administrative salary schedule. We have increased the starting ranges and ending ranges of all of the grades for the administrative salary schedule. With there are no questions, we'll move on to the proposed placement guide for instructional staff. We haven't recommended any changes to this. This is the guide that we use when we hire employees on the instructional salary schedule. It shows the years of experience, and then the appropriate step placement based on their educational level, whether it's a bachelor's, BA plus 15, a master's, an MA plus 30, or a doctorate. There are no questions, we'll move on to the 200-day instructional salary schedule, which is commonly referred to as a 10-month contract for instructional staff. And again, we've increased the salary ranges by 5%. The starting and the ending range. The 210 instructional salary schedule, which is a 10.5-month contract, the same changes, and we've increased the ranges by 5%. And the 220 instructional salary schedule, or 11-month contract, again, shows a 5% increase at the beginning and ending range. The support salary schedule, we also increased that by 5% at the beginning range and the ending range. So, all the scales have been changed to reflect the 5% increase. Okay. The extra pay for extra-duty salary schedules, or what we call the EPEDs, those are for coaching and extra assignments. There are no proposed rate changes for those. And then the last one is the hourly temporary substitute assignment rates. And again, we propose no increases for next school year to the current rates.
Any questions for Mrs. Wingfield about compensation?
I do have a couple of questions.
Sure, Mrs. Paul.
For the step schedule, I was really new when we first saw that, so I'm not sure that I understood correctly, but I thought that the idea for the step schedule was that at year 16, where it's showing step 17, that those were going to move down by year until they became, so all those 17s were going to turn to 18s, and then it was going to keep moving down until it phased out, was the way that I thought that a former school board member described that. I wasn't sure if I misunderstood, or if that is something that's going to stay at year 17. Well, at year 16, step 17 is going to stay for those three years in perpetuity.
It sounds like if that's what the school board wants to do, then you have a thing need to take a vote on that.
Okay, okay. Maybe I can just ask colleagues about what the intent was there. I also wasn't sure. There was an 11, what is the current minimum wage?
What is it, it's $11 now?
I thought it was, yeah, 11. I don't know, I just saw one thing on the very last, I think, summer, something that had summer school on it, where I saw something that was $11.
Oh, scroll up a little bit.
There's building usage and.
Right there.
Yeah, learning support.
Summer feeding program, student food service worker.
And there's one, like, third from the top. And, yeah, just a couple. I mean, I think for the most part, they've all been adjusted, but I just wanted to make sure that we were in compliance. I don't know if there's something special about, about summer school.
Ms. Miller whispered in my ear, the minimum wage is going up to $12 in January the 1st.
Okay, okay. Next January.
So, 2023.
Okay, thank you.
Propose.
Not here, but the state, yes, propose.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Wingfield on compensation?
I don't think so.
Continue on to health insurance, then? And is Ms. Mills going to join us? Okay, wonderful. Hi.
USI is our benefits consultant, and they help us in a lot of ways. And earlier this school year, they thought that we should do an RFP just to make sure that we are getting the best rates from the local choice. So, Ms. Mills worked with Greg Snow to create the RFP, and there were four firms that submitted a proposal, Aetna, Anthem, Benefit Plan Administrators, and the local choice. And from the review, we did find that we were getting the best rates from the local choice, so we went ahead and moved forward with recommending the renewal of the local choice for the next school year. Recommendation that USI did make to us is to maintain our medical plan reserves in the, in the event, in the future, if we ever wanted to move away from the local choice, we would be prepared financially to do that. So, in saying that, Ms. Mills is going to talk about the health insurance, medical premiums for the upcoming school year.
Hi. Which way do I click it? Left or right? To the right, okay, perfect. Oh, gosh. Sorry.
Okay, we have it up here, too.
It'll make you dizzy. Okay, here are the medical rates for this year and then the upcoming year. At the very top, it's the 2122 rates, and the two middle ones are the 2223 rates. On the far left side, you're going to see our membership numbers. These numbers are from January of 2021. We have 798 participants. We have 261 employees who have waived, and we have 896 dependents. Thank you. So, here again, we have the rates. This is just for this year. At the very top, it's the full monthly amount. You're going to see that all of the Anthem plans, which are the ones that say KA in front of them, had a 0% increase. And then the Kaiser had an overall 8.2% increase. So, the middle, on the middle row is the employee contribution, and the employer contribution is at the bottom. Per TLC, employers have to do 80% of the employee-only premium. So, to add flexibility for employers like us who do multiple plans, they allow us to do premium averaging, which takes our comprehensive plans, we add them together, and we take 80% of that average. So, for us, for this year, it's 624 for employee only, and then we do the same process for the employee plus one and family, but we do it at a 70%. So, for, in employee plus one, it's now 1008, and for family, it's 1470. And then you can see the employee portions in the middle there. Here are standalone plans. We have a Delta Dental, and we have our Vision Plan. The Delta Plan had a 3% increase, which is in line with what we've seen the last few years, and we do a 6040 split on that. And then our Vision Plan, it did not have an increase, and it is a 100% employee paid, so you don't see any employer portion there. We offer our retirees health insurance, too. So, for our non-Medicare retirees, they're able to keep the same plans that we offer to our active employees, and you're going to see the rates are the same for them as well. We have 21 active retirees on a non-Medicare plan, and in the past, there was a subsidy applied, and they were grandfathered in. It was stopped several years ago, 13 years ago, 14? I don't know. But there's only two left. So, by January of 2025, we should have no retirees that will be receiving a subsidy for health insurance from us. We have 144 retirees who are on our Advantage 65 plan, so those are for those who are Medicare eligible. And then below, we have 18 people that are on our Delta Dental, and we have 17 policyholders on our Vision Plan. And then here are the plans for the state. They compare them for us. They don't have Kaiser on this one, so Kaiser is going to be a separate one. There were no changes to the services either, so these are exactly the same as last year's.
And then the very last thing we have is the WABE guide. And what that's doing is showing us information from surrounding districts for last year in terms of benefits. Any questions?
I don't see any.
Okay.
Thank you for all the information, and we appreciate. This isn't the first time we've seen this, just so everyone knows. And we've had a chance to thoroughly review it, absorb it, and thank you for bringing us the information so we can continue to make good decisions for our benefits, for our staff. And then next up is Ms. Wingfield, Classification and Compensation Study coming up.
This presentation is an update to the school board's request for a classification and compensation study. Last year, the division sought the services of SEAGLE to conduct a class and comp study due to their work and familiarity with Northern Virginia school districts, as well as positive references given by these districts. At this time, we have been able to secure the services of SEAGLE. This presentation will outline the study. The scope of the Classification Comp and Study will focus on classified salary scales, extra pay for E, extra pay for extra duty, which was the EPEDs, coaching, and additional assignments for things like class sponsorship and clubs, and the hourly temporary substitute additional assignment pay rates. The goals of the study for all three areas are to view the market and make recommendations for competitiveness and comparability. In addition, SEAGLE will be making recommendations to the support salary schedule for scale structure, pay ranges, and grade assignments. They will also be making recommendations on the modification to the classified job titles. The study will begin in May in order to capture compensation that has been approved for school year 2223. The study is slated to conclude in October. The results of the study will then be shared with the school board. And Ms. Paul, part of what you were asking about the hourly rates and the pay ranges, that's the largest reason we didn't look at, making changes to the EPD and the hourly salary rate, because there's, those scales are so large, and SEAGLE, again, because of their familiarity, that will be two of the three things that they will do. So, when they finish this, we'll be able to bring back those recommendations so we can make some decisions, if any, are needed.
Any other questions?
Quick question. Billy K., can you share a little bit of the background on why we asked to have this study done? We had some questions about, and forgive me if I'm wrong, about where we are in comparison to other local divisions. And so, this has been in the works, this has been in discussion for at least a year?
Right. We've made changes to the administrative salary schedule. We made changes to the teacher salary schedule a few years ago. We have not looked since I've been here at the support salary schedule. So, we just want to make sure that we are in the market, and, you know, a principal is pretty much a principal, a teacher's a teacher, but there are, I don't know, I counted at one point when we did the RFP, 75, 85 classified positions. You know, bus driver's a bus driver, but some of the positions we have, there are, it's not always apples to oranges. But we wanted to, we wanted to find out if we're in the market, if we need to increase the ranges, if we have positions that are on the appropriate grade. So, that's why we did that. And then again, with the EPEDs, you have, with the coaches and the hourly positions, I mean, some things are easy to look at, like substitutes, because a few years ago, we looked at our substitute pay. But we just wanted to have someone take an in-depth look at what we are paying and what the region is paying, because we want to be competitive.
And so, then, by having the results in October, we should be able to start talking about them probably November, December, so that when we start talking budget, we have a strong idea of where we are.
And how much it's going to cost.
Yeah. So, thank you, and I appreciate getting this started, because I know it was something we talked about. We did a lot of back and forth on, and there were a lot of questions. So, thank you for getting this started. Anything else?
Yes, Mrs. Paul.
Just because it came up last night at the city council meeting, that they are reviewing their, the city council salaries themselves, I just wonder if the school board is on a review-type situation, just to make sure that, that that pay is also staying competitive?
Well, they actually, SEAGLE is actually doing their study, and they actually sent me some information about positions.
Okay, okay. Well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wingfield. All right, moving right along. On tonight's action agenda, we have our Equity in Education Proclamation. And this is an effort that is to encourage equity in education. The VSBA Board of Directors has designated the month of March as VSBA Equity in Education Month. Equity in education is a significant challenge nationwide. According to the National Center for Education Statistics, the majority of public school students were students of color, and more than half of public school students qualify for subsidized meals due to low family income. Public education has struggled to serve these students both adequately and equitably. When inequity in education persists, there is a cost to all involved, including missed opportunities for economic development, greater dependence on government supports, and fewer Americans ready to serve and lead. May I have a motion, please?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion, the school board of the city of Manassas approve the Equity in Education Proclamation.
Who seconded that? Thank you, Mrs. Paul. I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, seconded by Mrs. Paul, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the Equity in Education Proclamation. Is there any discussion? Mrs., yes, Vice Chair Stevens.
I just wanted to share a little bit of background about the proclamation. We first voted on it last year. In 2020, we established a Diversity Equity Inclusion Task Force, which included subcommittees. Task Force is made up of educators, administrators, parents, students, and community members who have all been working together through a three-year process to ensure that we are, and it actually says it in the proclamation itself, that we are providing equitable education for every student, is the city's most valuable mechanism for reducing poverty, addressing racial disparity, building a thriving community, and driving economic advancement for its citizens. So, we are in 2022, we're in year two with our task force. Next year will be year three. If anyone is interested in learning a little bit more about our task force, you can reach out to any one of us on the board, and we can. you can reach out to any one of us on the board, and we can direct you to the correct person. Completely transparent in all our conversations and in everything we do. But this is really important to us as a school board and as a school division, that we provide equitable opportunities for all of our students so they can be successful leaders within our school community and the greater community in Virginia itself. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Stevens. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call a vote then. All in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you all. Only thing left now is to adjourn. May I have a motion, please? Oh, so sorry. Thank you. Okay, school board member comments. First up will be Ms. Toldoli.
Good evening to the school board and everyone that is joining us tonight. I just, first thing, I wanted to remind, like, all students in district that grades are due sometime this week, so make sure to get all your work in and talk to your teachers if you need to, and try your best to catch up. I also wanted to talk about mental health. I feel like the health and safety of all students is our community's first and biggest priority, and that is why I want to remind students to discuss the problems and stress that they have to someone they trust. We have a really good counseling department also. And just talk to someone that they feel comfortable with overall. I want our community to know that they are not alone and that we are all going through this, and that it's okay to take a break from your job, from school. And, yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tnoli. Mr. Beepe?
Good evening, all school board members. My first point I wanted to make this evening was that it is the end of the marking period, so please check in on all the students, parents, teachers, whoever you know, just to make sure that they're doing all right at this point in the school year. My second point is later this month, at Osborne, students will be taking the SAT and the writing ASL. So I just want to wish everyone well who's going to be taking those exams and hope that everyone gets all the support that they need in order to take those tests. And lastly, I'd just like to say congratulations to the social workers in Manassas City Public Schools that were recognized tonight. Your contributions are greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Kind comments, thank you. Mrs. Ball?
Hi. I just wanted to say I was happy to be part of the National School Social Worker Week, and I agree it is time to shine. We have some really great social workers, so thank you for that opportunity. I met with the school board reps with Ms. Williams a couple of weeks ago, and I just want to reiterate, as I try every time, to say how delightful that they are. They're just wonderful young ladies with very busy schedules, and we're lucky to have their time and their attention, so I thank them. I wanted to offer happy birthday to Mr. Ickball tomorrow. He'll be having another trip around. I attended a council meeting to hear Hayden give their presentation. It was very well done. And recently visited the SBA in Charlottesville for training. I wanted to say that I have a city-based summer employment flyer, so I think it's great whenever we can grow our own employees. So, starting with high schoolers, anybody that's watching, I think that these flyers are available with, in the office or in college and career counseling at Osborne. And just to say that equity inclusion is probably one of the most important things that we can accomplish at this time in history. So I'm very glad that we made the proclamation that we did tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ball. Mrs. Williams?
Thank you. First, I want to express how important social workers really are right now in our school systems. The mental health of our students have increased exponentially since, especially since COVID. So many children have been truly unsupervised for almost two years, and it has impacted our schools every day still today. So I do truly appreciate everything the social workers do. Mrs. Wingfield, Mrs. Mills, thank you so much for your presentation. I know putting all that together, it looks so easy when you're up here, but I know behind the scenes, it's a lot of work, and I really appreciate everything you do. Ms. Tnoli and Mr. Beepe, thank you so much for all that you do, and it was a pleasure having your mid-year evaluation, really trying to give us suggestions. And I just really appreciate your suggestions when you met with myself and Mrs. Ball. Scholarships, scholarships, please. Everybody, go onto the Osborne High School website. There are so many scholarships available, and I want to make sure there is no money left on the table. Even if you think you don't qualify, or you think, oh, what's a thousand dollars? Trust me, it will help you, so please reach... They're not all have been... There's some due mid-March, or some due April. There's some that have already been, the due dates passed, but check it out, please. Because last year, we had many scholarships go unfunded, and that was not a good feeling. And with that, I am done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Hollingsworth, any comments this evening?
I have no comment.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Brooks?
Thank you, Chair Seberg. I just wanted to echo the other sentiments about, you know, our student reps. You guys are amazing, and we really appreciate you stepping in and adding another thing to your plate to help us. And definitely, thank you, and kudos to our social workers. They have a very big job in their services, you know, immensely appreciated and needed. And that is all I have. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Ickball?
Hello, good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I want to wish everyone a happy International Women's Day. The many contributions of women all throughout history should not be understated. Women have led and pioneered the advancement of every field and discipline imaginable, and will continue to guide and make progress towards a fair, equitable, and gender-inclusive society. I urge everyone to take a moment today to appreciate and thank the women in our lives who achieve so much. And if possible, consider donating to women-focused charities and nonprofits. I also want to echo my fellow board member sentiments in thanking our school's social workers. It's a very important and difficult job, so thank you for the service you do for our community. And lastly, I just want to wish our band, orchestra, and choral students the best of luck during their assessments in the upcoming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you. First, I want to say congratulations to Osborne Concert Band and Symphonic Band. They just finished their concert, District 9 Concert Assessments. Both groups earned the highest rating possible, a superior. We got to see them during pre-assessments, and they really were quite amazing, so way to go. School social workers, you do so many things that most of us don't see at all any time. You're out there on the front lines every day, and you are so needed and so valuable. I don't know what we would do without you. So, thank you. Have a fabulous rest of your March. And we're almost at the fourth quarter, so we're almost done. We can do it.
Thank you, Vice Chair Stevens. Everybody's already mentioned all the things that I wanted to mention, so I appreciate that. And I echo all the kind thoughts about our social workers, our staff presenting to us this evening, all the musical groups from Osborne High School and Metz getting assessed. And with that, I'll ask for our last motion. Ms. Chair, by motion, adjourn.
Second.
Was that Lisa? I have a motion by Mrs. Williams, seconded by Vice Chair Stevens. Does the school board meeting adjourn? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you.